I hereby call to order this regular meeting for the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, January 23rd, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Peeling.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzico.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabeau.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
Great. Principal Kate Dominique will introduce Willmet Junior High students to lead the pledge.
Good evening. Good evening. I am Kate Dominique. I'm the principal at Willmet Junior High School, and I could not be more honored to share with you this group of students. So after a several-year hiatus, we were able to bring back student council this year, which I find very important, and they do too. We're really grateful. Our PTO helps sponsor our student council. But more importantly, we really need adults and staff members to step up and be our advisors. And most importantly, hence this group to my left, we need students who are really, you know, interested in being leaders for the school and taking on a challenge and being student advocates. And so without any further ado, I'm going to pass this to our student council officers and let them introduce themselves to you all and tell you what made them decide to join student council.
Hello, I'm Coral Levine, and I joined student council to make eighth grade one of the best years for the leaving eighth graders.
Okay, because last guess, and I joined student council because I hadn't gotten to before and because I thought it would be fun to help make decisions to make the school a better place.
Hi, I'm Avni Arora. I'm the designer in student council, and I joined student council because I wanted to make the school a better place and participate in fun activities.
My name is Riley Bertaki. I'm the secretary of student council, and I joined student council because I wanted to get involved, and I thought it would be fun to plan events.
Hi, I'm Athafer Taria. I'm the vice president of student council, WJHS. I join student council because it's an opportunity for leadership, and I'm really good at that. Also, I want to serve WJHS.
Hi, I'm Lila Japatsky. I'm the alternative officer. The main reason I wanted to join student council is because I was really active in it in elementary school at Harper and in fifth grade. So when I wasn't able to do it in sixth and seventh grade, I was really missing it. So I'm really excited to be with a really good team and to be active in it again, as it brings a really good sense of community and school spirit. Now may you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your service and your dedication and your leadership. It's exciting to hear what brought you all to these positions, and it makes me think maybe you'll all consider being on the Board of Education when you're a little bit older. We really appreciate the work you do and your being here. And on your way out, I'd love to meet you over here by the door to share with you a small expression of our appreciation, and then you can meet your families in the lobby in the front. So thanks again. I'd like to direct your attention to the artwork behind us. The Highcrest Middle School students created ancient atmospheric landscapes using origami paper and colored pencils. Japanese landscapes typically include mountains, flowing water, and have a unique style that focuses on beauty rather than realism. At this point, I request a motion to adjourn to the working cash fund bond hearing.
I move to adjourn to the working cash fund bond hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the public hearing. And I will turn it over to Mr. Boltmeier.
Okay, let's share my screen.
Remember to move your microphone a little closer to your mouth.
Okay, so the public hearing that we're holding tonight is for the type of bond, working cash bonds that the district is looking to issue. This is a procedural step, but to just go back a bit for why we're pursuing a bond issuance, so in the month of December, to try and achieve on this first graphic, that third column with the August 2023 goal of trying to get five buildings to 100% of classroom air conditioning, that was what the board approved in the month of December. So this shows at four of the schools, the amount that was a board approved for each of the projects from the bids, and then the total bid approval for that night was 13.7 million. So the board approved 13.7, and how are we going to pay for it? That's where the bond issuance comes in, or at least pays for the majority of these projects. The goal with tonight is to kind of, the board to declare their intent, hence the public hearing, and then later on, there'll be a resolution. The board approves that talks about the intent. So just to let everyone know, there's a couple of options that the board is considering, and then we'll have more in-depth discussion in the month of February at the Finance Committee and then leading into the board meeting. But these numbers were run last week as from the month of December, the interest rates have decreased, and so Raymond James was able to run these. One scenario, I would look towards the bottom where there's yellow. The all-in cost for a 10-year payback would generate almost 9 million in proceeds, and you'd be looking at about all-in cost, including issuance cost, about 2.84%. That assumes a March 2023 issuance date. The other consideration is to generate 11.1 million at an all-in cost at 3.07% also done in March. Both of these scenarios included a 25 basis point rate cushion. Normally, when we're much further out, that rate cushion has been 75 or 100 basis points, but given that we're potentially, you know, under two months out, that cushion has been in the middle down. One last thing, and just to kind of highlight, as I mentioned, that tonight was, in many ways, a procedural step, and the board's not actually issuing any bonds. It's really just kind of declaring that intent. I just wanted to show the calendar, span that a little bit. So tonight, the board's holding a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed 11 million 250,000. Then later on, we'd ask the board to approve a resolution of intent. And then coming back in the month of February, the board will have discussion about the parameters of the issuance, particularly 10 years versus 12 years on a payback. And then coming back at this February 27th meeting, the board would be asked to approve a bond resolution that includes the parameters and then authorizes the sale of the bonds, which would likely occur probably 10 days to two weeks after that board meeting, which would then lead to the district potentially receiving the proceeds late March or into April. With the projects that these bonds are funding would occur in the summer of 2023. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, tonight is not really about the board making any decisions other than kind of declaring that intent to issue down the road.
Board members, I know we've discussed this, but are there any questions at this point?
Just a comment.
Please.
I've been pretty vocal about what it's been like to work for the past few years in schools that aren't air-conditioned. This past fall, I was assigned to a school that was air-conditioned and worked at another school on the other days that was air-conditioned. It's night and day. I mean, it's just, it takes something that's so prevalent and so impactful off the table, meaning the heat, that you could just hit the ground running with, you know, 100% learning on day one. So I'm just proud that we've been able to figure out a way to do this in such a fiscally responsible way.
So this is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the working cash fund bond presentation. Are there any audience members who would like to address the board on this topic? Okay. Seeing none, I request a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
I move to adjourn to the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Yea. Motion carries by general consent, and we're now adjourned to the regular meeting. I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 12th, 2022 Board of Education and Tax Levy Hearing Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the December 12th, 2022 Board of Education and Tax Levy Hearing Meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Or the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments, errors, or omissions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Motion carries by general consent. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. If there are any audience members who would like to speak at this time, I just remind you that the board, it's not a question-and-answer format. Questions brought up will be followed up by district administration. And if you'd like to speak, come on up, and I would ask you to state your name and community of residence, and by board directive, you are allowed three minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Jamie Dennis, and I'm from Mackenzie. And I am here to talk to you about an incident that arose this week with my daughter CJ Dennis, who is a third grader at Mackenzie. She's also a part of a comprehensive needs program. She has several disabilities, including autism, epilepsy, and she is nonverbal. On Tuesday morning, January 17th, we received an email detailing a change in the comprehensive needs schedule. This new initiative would have all students be placed into the fourth-grade classroom, meaning the comprehensive needs students, for morning meeting, lunch, recess, PE, and specials. While the fourth-grade comprehensive needs students would remain in their own homeroom teacher, the third-grade students would be reassigned to join them. This plan was made effective immediately. In short, the very day it was received, with no opportunity to challenge and little explanation of why. By law, however, a change of placement requires an IEP meeting 10 days prior to placement and with consent of parents. Additionally, the school did not give us any reasons other than a consistent schedule. I expressed our concerns with the principal, particularly since it was implemented without a chance of notice from families and children impacted. Our daughter has made enormous social gains in her third-grade class. You have no idea what that means as a parent of a nonverbal child. For the first time ever, CJ is sitting at a table with her peers, who are typical. She's being invited to class parties and is acknowledged by other kids in her own neighborhood. CJ's IEP states that she will spend morning meeting, gym, recess, and specials in her general education class. Arbitrarily transferring her to the fourth-grade classes without advance notice will be harmful to her. To be clear, CJ's best interests are being sacrificed in the name of the school's desire for consistent scheduling. This is not to appear the least restrictive environment that's outlined by the IDEA Act of 1975. In addition, last week, our family received another email notifying us that the school had hired a new speech therapist. You know, we're unaware of when the last speech therapist left. Why were we not relayed this message? My daughter and our family feel extremely vulnerable to these changes because naturally she is unable to vocalize them with us. To add insult to injury, this week, Mackenzie is hosting its Respect Each Other's Differences Week. Are the comprehensive needs of students like CJ being respected? The answer seems to be no. Additionally, Mackenzie PTA is currently fundraising for an inclusive playground in the amount totaling several hundred thousand dollars. How can we prioritize an inclusive playground when our classrooms do not follow suit? I am suggesting the board review this, if this is a staffing issue or...
Thank you very much.
Neil Nenadovic, Dad. Our daughter Lauren... Our daughter Lauren Neal is a third-grade student at Mackenzie. She has multiple disabilities, including autism, is nonverbal. We're speaking in support of Jamie Dennis. We are in identical situation with the same concerns and the negative impact of proposed changes that would happen to Lauren. We were only notified of the changes as well on January 17th, the day that they were to be implemented. We've asked multiple times why the changes are being proposed without receiving an adequate response. For the first time this year, Lauren has started to seek meaningful interactions with her peers. She has a few friends in third-grade class that she has that take an interest in her and are happy to interact with her. We are concerned that these interactions will be lost. We are very grateful for the Mackenzie community and for the comprehensive needs program, and we do hope that an applicable solution can be reached without further impact on our children.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to speak? I will turn our meeting to our committee reports, starting, well, our facility development did not have items for discussion this month, so Mr. Caesaretti, School Finance.
President Peeling. So the School Finance Committee met on January 17th as part of the Committee of the Whole to discuss select student fees for 2023 and 2024 school year, the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar and resolution, and the 2023 bond issuance. In discussion of the select student fees, the board considered the recommendation not to increase fees for Keep 39 for the upcoming school year. The board also reviewed proposed fees for Summer Enrichment 2023 program. Only a small increase in transportation fees was recommended. Regarding the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar and resolution, the board reviewed a budget calendar for the development of the next fiscal year's budget, which appears later on this evening's agenda. In addition, the board discussed the 2023 bond issuance, the hearing for which was held earlier this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Schneider-Fabeau, Strategy.
Yea.
The Strategy Committee also met on January 17th as part of the Board's Committee of the Whole meeting. The board received and considered two progress reports related to the strategic plan. The first provided a review of progress relative to Goal Three action steps, which support our efforts to foster a professional community that values, supports, develops, and retains highly effective staff. The second provided a review of progress relative to the action steps within Goal Four. This report specifically provided an update regarding the district's work in support of fourth and fifth-grade transitions designed to strengthen partnerships by connecting, collaborating, and communicating with families and communities to advance teaching and learning. Finally, the board reviewed and discussed the proposed 2023-24 school calendar, which is recommended for approval later on in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Terrific. Liaison reports, starting with Ms. Stone for Community Review.
Yes, the CRC met on January 10th here at the MEK. A few different things. One is that each of their four subgroups has the goal of getting draft conclusions and draft recommendations in their shared file by the February meeting that they are having on the 7th of February. They, subgroups are meeting outside of just the regular CRC meetings. They're also meeting on their own. They're working very hard. And their timeline, they're hoping that this would be year one, and that that would be focusing on making neurodivergent students feel connected and accepted in their buildings and improving upon district climate towards those ends, and that year two, which would be the next CRC, would focus more on academic aspects with neurodivergence. Next meeting is February 7th here at the MEK.
Thank you. Educational Foundation, Dr. Kremis Gole.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending the Educational Foundation meeting this month, and they reported on a number of things. Most importantly, upcoming GRIP grants. They've made visits to our schools to meet with our teachers and make sure that everyone's aware of the application process. We're encouraging all teachers to consider applying for their generous grants. They're also in the process of board member recruitment and executive board member placement, so they're doing some work in that regard. And if anyone's interested in serving on a really outstanding organization that serves our district incredibly well, the Educational Foundation is definitely an organization to consider applying to. And then finally, they are doing some planning for upcoming fundraiser and community raising events. Two noteworthy ones, Bingo Night is coming up for students and families, always a really, really fun night at Highcrest Middle School, and they also have Paddle Night happening again this year. That is for adults only, but super fun and also a really nice way to raise some funds for the foundation while also bringing together members of our community. So we're very grateful for their support.
Terrific. Great to hear. And anything from the Willmet village intergovernmental group?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I think the Sustainability Coordinator was hired and is planning on starting in February, so that's very exciting.
Oh.
But I think we haven't signed her.
The intergovernmental agreement is forthcoming. We are working out all the language of that, so I was going to report on that in just a little bit under the administrative announcements.
I felt I was sort of jumping again a little.
That's right.
We hired somebody, but we haven't agreed on it.
We know the terms.
Yes.
Okay. IASB?
Nothing to report there.
Okay.
It's very quiet right now.
Legislative?
Yes, I would love to report on that. During its lame duck session earlier this month, the Illinois General Assembly considered a number of bills, including a late amendment to a House bill that would have mandated a statewide sex ed curriculum. That bill was never called for a vote. What was passed was HB 5471 banning assault weapons in Illinois. Then thereafter, the new General Assembly was then sworn in, and on its first day, the Illinois House introduced 1,124 bills. So I will be keeping an eye out for bills relating to our work here as they mature.
Thank you for keeping us updated. I will turn it over to Dr. Kremis Gole for information items.
Thank you. We have a number of items to report on this evening. First of all, as of the posting of this agenda on Friday, the board received several written communications from Carl Hopman regarding the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, the EIB Task Force, being formed to assess and recommend initiatives pertaining to recruitment, hiring, development, and retention of employees. As of today, the board did receive two additional communications that I'll report on now, and we'll make sure that those get attached to the agenda because I know the board has received those communications. One being from Neil Nenadovic and Ralph Newman, and the other from Jamie Dennis, both regarding Mackenzie's comprehensive needs program and our students' integration into the general education classrooms for those programs. Again, we'll make sure that those get attached to the agenda for public record. Administrative announcements, our strategic plan updates. As Lisa mentioned in her report, we've continued to provide progress reports and action step updates on our strategic plan efforts during our Committee of the Whole strategy meetings. We encourage everyone who is interested in our progress there to join us at Cow or to watch the recordings. A lot of really good information there, and we're doing our best to ensure that the presentations are also posted to the agenda so that people who aren't able to join us live are able to review those reports after the fact. There's a lot of good work being accomplished. We do have coming up, our district strategic advisory team will meet on February 16th to review our mid-year progress report, and we look forward to providing the board with a mid-year report on our strategic plan at the February 27th regular Board of Education meeting. I'll also share with the board and our community that we're busy planning already for the upcoming school year. Registration for the upcoming school year opens today. Thank you. Families should have received or will receive shortly an email with reminders for instructions for returning students. Everything will look very familiar to our families through Power School and the parent portal, so we ask our families to log in and complete the registration links and forms there. Again, payment isn't required now for those registration fees, but getting an accurate count will help us to make good progress on our staffing for the upcoming school year and make sure that we have the right number of sections for our expected students. Any new students can go onto our website and find the instructions for registration, or they can just reach out to their homeschool directly, and the secretaries will be able to help walk them through exactly what is needed. In particular, we encourage our new students, our incoming kindergarten students, to complete their enrollment process as quickly as possible, along with, if they're interested, the optional Keep 39 enrichment program. You can register for both of those at the same time, and again, that will help us tremendously with anticipating numbers of kindergarten sections at each of our schools for the upcoming school year. Both of those registrations can be done at the same time. Our Lechner Early Education Program, also known as LEAP, for our three, four, and five-year-old students, that registration has already been opened as well. And again, more information regarding all of this is available on our website or by contacting your local school. The secretaries are incredibly helpful with all of that. As Bonnie mentioned, we have our intergovernmental agreement, our IGA, regarding the Sustainability Coordinator. As everyone can imagine, with so many governmental entities partnering together on this one position of hire, the agreement and its review takes a little bit of extra time, and so we were hoping that we might have a final draft for you all today. But alas, it is not yet finalized. Our attorneys are still wordsmithing just a bit, and so we'll bring that forward to the board in February. We expect the Village, the Park District, all of our governmental partners to be considering it in February as well. The board will also see later on in this evening's agenda an intergovernmental agreement with Park School. Park School is within the Evanston School, District 65, and it provides a self-contained therapeutic school that serves students with significant needs. At times, we have students with disabilities that require support beyond what we can provide within our public school setting, and it's at those times that we look to alternative settings. And we're really fortunate to have a neighboring district who provides a school option for us to consider. And again, these decisions are made by our IEP teams only after the team has determined that student needs cannot be met within our programming. So in order to consider Park School as an option for our students, we must have an intergovernmental agreement in place, and so that intergovernmental agreement is required of the board to consider and approve prior to or in conjunction with making any placement of a student at Park School. So that is recommended to the board later on this evening's agenda. We also had our League of Women Voters Student Government Kickoff Event. It was wonderful. On Wednesday, January 11th, we kicked off our eighth graders, who are participating in this leadership project, always a highlight of the school year. We were thrilled to welcome so many community leaders and students to WJHS for our event. Over the next several months, our students will learn about local government and the importance of an informed and engaged citizenry. Many thanks to everyone who's supporting. Many thanks to everyone who supported this important work, especially Bonnie and Erin were there as the Board representatives. So thank you for giving up your time to join us that evening as well. And we have a Freedom of Information Act request to report on. The district received a FOIA request from Jeff Axelrod requesting residency documents for a specific family and/or their children from June 1st, 2021 through January 6th, 2023.
Thanks so much. Is there any questions? If there are any that was left. Move on with the other items?
Okay. Under Strategic Plan Update, the Board is aware we reviewed at Committee of the Whole the new calendar for the upcoming school year. If you review what's attached to the agenda this evening, you'll see the look of the calendar has changed and been updated just a little bit to reflect the feedback from the Board. And honestly, as we looked at it, we saw where the confusion might be coming from with some of those grays and patterned boxes. So we went with another option that some of our neighboring districts are using at this point. And so the contents remain the same. The 2023-2024 school calendar is presented for Board approval tonight. The Calendar Committee, which consists of teachers, support staff, and administrators helped to create this calendar. Again, this year, the committee attempted to create a calendar that provides for as many uninterrupted weeks of learning and teaching as possible. We know that there are pros and cons to every calendar option. And so we know this is not a perfect calendar, but it certainly reflects careful consideration of all of the feedback that was provided from parents, from our staff, from our teachers, from our administrators, in an effort to align as best as possible with our neighboring districts, but also with the needs that we know exist within our district to support the needs of our students. Questions there? Under Annual Business, we have a Support Staff Union Letter of Agreement. As the Board is aware, as part of the new contract with the Support Staff Union annually, the SSU Leadership and Administrator for Technology and Safety will meet to review available training and stipends available for our technology staff. This meeting occurred earlier this month, and one proposed addition is recommended. Having at least one staff member receive the JAMP 300 level training that is proposed will benefit our student staff and the district as a whole. I know that either Heather or Tony could answer questions about this if the Board has any. Okay, well then, we're moving right along. Under Policy, we have first reading of Board Policies, 5:10, 5:35, 5:40, 5:50, 5:60, 5:70, 5:150, 5:240, 5:260, 5:270, and 7:180. These are the first readings of the revised policies. And we want to note that because many of the policies in Section 5 are subject to collective bargaining, the union leaders have also reviewed these policies prior to bringing them forward for the Board's consideration as well. And as is always our practice at this point, we consult with the press, the policy service from IASB for their recommended language, and also with the Board's attorney to ensure that everything that needs to be covered is covered there. So we'll open it up to questions or comments or feedback from members of the Board.
I had a couple of comments on 7:180.
Just a second, Frank. Let us all get to 7:180.
The first question was, it looks like it was revised last April. And I didn't see anything crossed out. So the only thing I could find was is prohibited in bold letters twice, I guess. Five seconds on why?
If you go to, I'm not sure what, it's page three of six, I think, on that policy. You see, just above the Non-Discrimination Coordinator, there's a line that's underlined.
Oh.
That was added. That's a new requirement from ISB. And we have to annually submit our bullying policy, and that is a requirement.
Okay. I missed what was underlined, and I didn't, since it was recent. And then the second quest, question, comment, whatever. Is this, does this refer to bullying in the, I guess, the state definition where there's a report that we have like three or four incidents or some small number a year? Or is this any bullying that's reported through whatever means that doesn't rise to the level of that report?
So our administrators start off treating all instances of bullying as something that could be a significant situation. Many times, they interview children and they determine that this is not a repeated situation. There's not a power imbalance. And so it doesn't rise to the level of the state indicated bullying.
So this would cover?
It covers the investigation and follow-up for all reports of bullying. Sometimes those elevate to what then gets included in that state report. Many times, it is dealt with on a different level and isn't determined to meet that full definition of the state report. And I know it can be confusing because there's a couple of different ways in which to report and track bullying.
And I mean, the state report, there's lots of reasons why it is what it is. But we know there's more than three incidents a year, whatever that number is, which is very small. So this refers to a larger subset. That's good. The next question on this related is, or so years ago, there was a survey of students on what bullying they were perceiving. Have we updated that? Is there anything newer than that? I can't remember, three, four, or five years ago. It blends together after a while.
Yeah, we do that every year as part of the mesh data. So our students, and we report on it when we do the bullying report at the end of the school year. And I believe that Kelly shared that information when she did the report in the fall on the fall survey. We have a couple of questions about bullying on there.
All right, that was all I, yeah.
I had a really, go ahead, you go first.
Sure.
Yes.
I had a question about 5:10. First sentence, the second line. Do we know why gender identity has been crossed out or recommended to be crossed out?
Yeah, I asked about that because I thought it might come up. It is now sexual orientation is inclusive of gender identity for the definition. So that, that was the response that I received when I asked about that. It is a preference. There, it's the will of the Board to keep it. There's no harm in keeping it. We can certainly keep it called out specifically, but it is how it is being defined right now.
It's interesting because it's not, the way I've always thought of it, is not a sexual orientation so much as a identity.
Gender identity.
To be clear, there was no intent to exclude it. It was trying to align with what is now our definition. So feedback is welcome.
I'd like to see that included still.
Does it fit into sex or sexual orientation?
Right, that would make more sense to me.
I still think it's different.
It may still be different. I just want to be clear that it may.
Under their category.
A bit under their category of sex because it is a, which is originally right. But again, if it is the will of the Board to include the language, it certainly was not our intent to exclude any.
I figured there was a reason.
Yeah.
There's already 18 items or so in there, so adding one more.
Sorry, Bonnie, I think I might have interrupted you when you were saying.
No, no, not at all. No, I would say that if it were up to me, I would keep gender identity in this list.
See no reason to take it out?
It's fine to keep it. I'm not.
Yeah, that's interesting. We can learn. I'm sure there's learning for us to be had about how that falls under that category. But it sounds like people would love to keep it.
And I think because the definitions are a little fluid, that I don't want to see it, you know, the next year, having to, you know, actively add that language back in.
Rather be consistent. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Other?
Had just a small question on 5:40. And I think this is probably just dictated by law, but I found it interesting. In the second paragraph, it says, "An employee with a communicable or chronic infectious disease is encouraged to inform the superintendent immediately." Is that the law?
Or are we asking them, I mean?
Standard.
Okay.
That's required, encouraged.
Okay, okay.
We think a lot about the communicable diseases of COVID-19 now. But there are many, many, many communicable diseases.
Right, I was thinking about them all.
Not all of which would necessarily be informed, I would presume.
Okay.
I wouldn't always be informed of those.
Okay.
Really, sometimes our administrative team is in business. So it's encouraged, especially if it's infected.
Any other policy questions, comments? We can move along. So then, this is another opportunity for the public to address the Board. I do not see anyone here. So we will continue with our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the Board would like pulled? Okay, Ms. Stone, please proceed with the motions.
I move to approve the Personnel Report dated January 23rd, 2023. I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Evanston Skokie School District Number I move to adopt the resolution establishing the School District 2024 fiscal year and direct the Superintendent to prepare a tentative budget and approve the attached budget planning calendar as written. I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 student fees for the courses scheduled during the summer enrichment program. These courses include enrichment classes and review and reinforcement. I move to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar. I move to approve the Support Staff Union SSU Letter of Agreement indicating changes to technology stipends. I move to approve as first reading of Board of Education Policies, 5:10 Equal Employment Opportunity in Minority Recruitment, 5:35 Compliance with Fair Labor Standards Act, 5:40 Communicable and Chronic Infectious Diseases, 5:50 Drug-Free and Alcohol-Free Workplace, E-cigarette, Tobacco, and Cannabis Prohibition, 5:60 Expenses, 5:70 Religious Holidays, 5:150 Personnel Records, 5:240 Suspension, 5:260 Student Teachers, 7:180 Prevention of and Response to Bullying, Intimidation, and Harassment. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between December 13th, 2022 through January 23rd, 2023 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $346,362.16. O&amp;M Fund: $32,810.87. Transportation: $44,971.96. Capital Projects: $301,246. For a total, all funds of $725,390.99. I move to approve the manual checks issued between December 13th, 2022 and January 23rd, 2023 in the following amounts. Educational Fund: $1,302,234.76. O&amp;M Fund: $199,152.68. Transportation: $143,142.65. Capital Projects: $547.50. Port: $285,779. For a total, all funds of $1,930,856.59.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the Clerk please call the roll? John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Ready for the next motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the resolution declaring the intention to issue $11,250,000 Working Cash Fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund and directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Would the Clerk please call the roll? John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, we're at conference items. Any old business? Any new business?
I'll mention under new business, we're looking to consider rescheduling the February Committee of the Whole Meeting. I will need to participate remotely and ideally in the afternoon. And we have a member of the Board who also needs to participate in the afternoon. So we've come up with three alternatives, one of which I think does not work for another member of the Board. The Thursday afternoon on February 23rd will not work for one member of the Board. So we have two dates to consider. One is February 13th, beginning at either 4:00 or 4:30. The other is February 14th, beginning at 4 o'clock. Either of those dates works for our team. There seems to be a slight preference for Monday, the 13th over Tuesday, the 14th. Looks like maybe members of the Board agree. Okay, so, yes?
I have a slight preference for the 14th.
Oh, okay.
But if that's my, I'll make the 13th work. I couldn't work that hard.
Your mom gonna make those Valentine's cookies again?
It's on the 14th then.
Bed for cookies.
I can get out of here and try for dinner.
Any indication? We should be able to keep it to a few hours, but we do very much want to make sure that, if possible, members of the Board are here. We will be talking about the bond issuance, the length of payback there. So it's an important topic. And also the Keep 39 fees and history and digging into that a little bit more. So those two topics make this an especially important meeting, so.
So it sounds like we've heard from everybody that everybody's available both?
I can just do the Monday. But don't, you don't have to schedule on me.
No, I think we do want everybody here, just given the importance of the topics if we can.
Is there any, I think you said 4 o'clock on the 13th and 4, or 4:30 on the 13th and 4 o'clock on the 14th for the two times?
We could, on the 13th, we can do 4:00 or 4:30.
Okay. If we could move it a little earlier, that would be helpful.
A 4 o'clock start?
Try to keep it brief.
On a Monday, actually, it might be.
Oh, okay. Is it for your team?
Yeah, the earlier the better because our team is here and working. And so.
I bet I could do three that day.
Ooh, okay. So I didn't clear 3 o'clock with my whole team, but we have a team meeting tomorrow morning. Let me do that and clear that. And if we can make 3 o'clock work, does that work for everyone's work schedule? 3 o'clock on Monday, February 13th? Fantastic. Let's do this. Tentatively schedule that. Reserve that time for yourself. I will confirm. confirm with everyone tomorrow and then get a message out to the Board. And as we plan for the February Committee of the Whole meeting, we'll just plan for it to be in the afternoon. And let me just say, we really appreciate everyone being flexible so that we can make this work. I know that we can't do this at every meeting, but every once in a while, it's nice to be able to make an adjustment so as many people as possible can be there. So thank you. Okay?
And we will do our best to get you out of there, be with your twins. Okay. Good in welfare.
Something small. Over winter break, I was out taking a walk, and this man was approaching me, and I looked at him, and I thought, I recognize that guy. I realized I'd only ever seen him on a Zoom call, but I'd seen him on a lot of Zoom calls that summer of 2020 when we had the reopening task force. So he's a parent. He's also a doctor, so we chatted. But it just got me thinking about the amount of work that the parents do on a volunteer basis. That summer, I mean, everyone was working their tail off, but I remember all these doctors on my subcommittee, they were like zooming in from their offices in their spare time between appointments. Like, they were working their schedules. It just started making me think about like this, the new task force, the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Task Force, and DSET, and the strategic plan, and all these things that people volunteer for, CRC, Ed Foundation, and it really does take a village. I'm just really grateful for the amount of volunteer work that everybody in our district contributes to help the kids.
Such a great reminder. Thank you. Very true. Anyone else? Okay, may I have, excuse me, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations, specific personnel, and individual student matters?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiations, specific personnel, and individual student matters.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the Clerk please call the roll? John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Panzico?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session.